Chris. So, we'll call the meeting in order at anywhere twenty second, six o'clock in the middle of school. Rocky and, uh, Boogin' Street. And the first item is the Florida Republican Party. By way of this, you know, I, I think that's a state, uh, it's a part of what you say. One nation under God, in this world, whatever it is, it has to follow. That's supposed to be a wonder.
I apologize, I didn't come off, because this is a special meeting, so.
You're right, sure, it should. So I want to apologize, Ray in a mask, I don't have COVID, and I do have a really bad cold. Recat the full force of it last night, and I decided I'd spare you all tonight, so.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item is communications and public comments, I'm just gonna make a couple of comments before that, just for the, I don't know if there are folks waiting to talk, but two things you should know. One is that the first item of business is the DSZ position, and that is, that is just to clear up some misinformation that's been circulating in the community about that. And the second item, like I was gonna state, is we passed our budget on the O F. And, uh, it is not impossible, but very unlikely that it's going to be reconsidered. So, that said, this is the public's time, you can come and be unhappy with us, express your concerns on whatever matters you want, that's okay, but you should just kind of know that upfront, that's the way things are proceeded. So, with that said, are there folks who want to talk, and if they are, this is the lead we seek, because you have to be close to the owl, and it's like Mr. Lowry is definitely not. Part of the penalty is he's sitting here, he's sick guy.
Great, excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm Peter Lowry, I've taught Central School in 2004. I'd like to, you know, short talk, just to tell you about what I do at Central School, and in light of a potential cut to the position. So I've benefited from exceptional support from the administrators throughout my career at Central School. And administrators and colleagues of mine have understood the value of P E, and builds physical skills and fitness, but also communication, cooperation, and the value of teamwork. I've had many opportunities, almost every class, to have in mathematics and literacy. I've worked really hard to build a program at Central School, and it's educational, challenging, fun, and safe. I've played after-school activities, before, before-school activities, one-to-school days, kids' heart challenge, bike safety rodeos, lots of things which take a lot of planning and time and effort, and I'm happy to do that. And I understand that all of you have the best in mind for kids, and you have to balance that with the cost, and that's a huge role, and I'm a taxpayer too in Central City, so I understand taxes as well. And this isn't about me, I'm not personally offended in any way. We're all on the same team, I just explain what I do with a few points. So point one is if my position is cut to three days, it could mean that some classes are combined in elementary school, and that would mean about thirty-two to thirty-six kids in the classroom in the central school gym, or it could mean there's less classes of P E. Either, either of which would not be appropriate for young children at Central School. Many of my units that use equipment would have to be cut out of the curriculum or changed. Right now, I'm teaching a tennis unit, even with kindergarten, I've done it for twenty years, and can you imagine thirty-four kindergartners with rackets in one gym? I cannot, it wouldn't be safe. I've taught inline skating to third and fourth graders for twenty years. Kids learn how to skate safely, with control, and I can't do the unit with more than one class, I don't have the equipment, I don't have the space, and it wouldn't be safe. So I've worked, concerned that, I've worked very hard to acquire inline skating equipment, it's very unique for an elementary school to have that. And I have skates, helmets, pads, I have a great relationship with Rosie in Lebanon, New Hampshire, and they've offered us a lot of equipment at a good price. Bike skills and safety, we can, they're a big deal at Central School. Local Motion out of Burlington offers bike trailers filled with bikes, curriculum, cones. They have four of these bike trailers that they drive around Vermont to schools, and we have the privilege of getting that trailer in May of this year. We've had it for many years in a row. But again, if I'm there for only three days, that's a, that's a really quick unit, it's hard to develop any meaningful skills in three days. Administrators have put tremendous trust in me, and have allowed me to take third and fourth graders out on the streets in Bellas Falls biking. I've worked with the police department, and we, and kids know that they have to show me that they can listen, and that they can ride straight, have space between bikes, they can ride smoothly before we go out on a ride. These are just real skills that kids can learn during the school day, and they can apply them right away after school. Teachers have given me extra class time during that weekend in particular, I have the flexibility to get extra time, longer classes, more classes, eighteen classes a week, which is less than most P E teachers. But because of that, I've been able to be flexible in what I do, and add in interesting and really good educational opportunities that some kids just can't do. Winter sports, I schedule them, I participate in them, I was just skiing before this meeting, freezing my hands off. But it takes a lot of time to plan winter sports. I personally go to yard sales, I maintain all of our skis, I find skis at yard sales, boots at ski swaps. We have a lot of equipment that I manage and maintain and fix, and that just takes a lot of time. We've got thirty pairs of inline skates, a hundred plus bicycle helmets, thirty sets of snowshoes, seventy pairs of cross-country skis, thirty sets of skis and poles, and I get to see kids inline ski, skate, ice skate, cross-country skiing, snowshoe, many of which for the first time is really cool. Going back to biking, I see kids bike for the first time, which is awesome, you can see the, the, the thrill in their eyes light up as they're able to balance for the first time, so that's just a great thing, that I'm able to experience in Central School. Two more things.
Yeah, three minutes, just like.
Okay.
You're doing fine.
Okay, collaboration with other teachers. I've had opportunities to be on committee, I've built all the flower beds at Central School with Erica Frank, the cook. We have also built two sheds and two bases for those sheds. And last of all, the Rocky and five K, I'm highly involved in that, and many of you know about that. It's one of the most exciting events that I've been able to participate, and I manage, I set up the website, I set up and take down the course, I find volunteers for the course, so if you're interested, April fifth, I'm looking to volunteer this for the five K. The fire department, the police department, Bellas Falls are instrumental in keeping that racecourse safe. We have brought in about a hundred thousand dollars through that five K. It's great. The proceeds have gone towards enrichment programs and week-long residencies like Tor Wondery Circus, New Hampshire Dance Institute, art with Martin, right, Roganese. The Sanglass Theater is coming this year, and then that's puppet making and performance. Thank you for listening, and I did want to mention that I heard that many of you gave big money towards winter sports. I thank you for that, it means a lot to kids in Central. Thanks for listening.
Thanks for your years of service. Anyone else? Anyone on last?
Um, hi, Drew Sacanti, I'm a mother of a third grader at Central Elementary and a preschooler in the Central Preschool Program. You know, I have grew up in Baltimore City and going through sort of the Baltimore City Public School Program, had an opportunity to see education through a lot of lenses in my own personal experience and sort of in deciding to move here. A lot of conversations around sort of what school options were and what they would look like for my kids. And I think one of the things that really, I balanced with Central in regard to a lot of the other schools in town is its lack of open play space with, you know, versus Westminster, Saxon River, Putney, or Dumerson, and sort of other schools in the community having a lot of outdoor space and a lot of opportunity to really integrate that into their programs, but felt like appreciated the intentional approach that Central took to balance that out through their physical education program. Someone who's personally really dedicated to the academic success of my children, but I also really believe that the physical education and ability to move their bodies is a huge part of that. I don't know any parent that is managing a day with their child at home that is intentionally building in moments where they are moving their body to get out their energy so that they can do what are things that are play and enjoyment, let alone trying to get them to sit still and focus and pay attention. You know, I think we balance a lot, and I appreciate the small class sizes that are available. I recognize that the number of gym days that will continue will be the same, but the programming itself will be different. Their ability to have a physical education day, which you can have a whole day like this in a small room when it's double the kids and less equipment, it's going to really shift what their experience has been, and I think this has been a huge part of feeling really happy about the experience that they're having overall at school. And, you know, I recognize balancing budgets are not easy, there are places that you have to make cuts, and none of those, you know, all of us have experiences of that, whether you're doing that personally for your own home, professionally within what you're managing. But I do also recognize there are places when you're looking at your budget where maybe this is a year where you're making an investment in technology, maybe this is a year where you bring in a consultant for process improvement. Those things can have long-term, you know, consequences that you're balancing, but these are also long-term consequences for our children. And, you know, I think that quality physical education that they've had access to at Central, that they've been able to have access to at Saxon River, that will be jointly impacted by this decision, will have ripple effects as they're coming into middle school, as their ability to be sort of, you know, active athletic participants as they move into high school. This isn't a town that has a lot of offerings with regard to other opportunities in order to participate in sports and things like that before you really enter the high school age, and I think we're gonna find ourselves as we're reaching a generation of high school students where we're actually not fielding teams anymore, and this isn't the town that's known for that. And I think the physical education program has been a huge part of being able to build that athletic career, but also just being able to provide that foundation for our kids that need it for their ability to move around. So, thank you very much and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well spoken.
Erica Roya, I have two children who went to Central Elementary School and now go to the middle school. And I'm here because when we first moved here, I was homeschooling our children, and I was not sure if I was interested in remoting them in a public school. I called Ms. Kennedy, and she was kind enough to arrange a tour with me and my two very nervous children. And after seeing the whole school and the atmosphere, everything about it, one of the major impressions on me and my children was the physical education program. I was sold, and Mr. Lowry has done an amazing job of introducing my children to things they normally wouldn't have done. They had never been on skis, they had never tried skating. These are all things, as he mentioned earlier, that worry you to make cuts to his funding he may not be able to do. I mean, I had volunteered when they did bicycles, and it was incredible to watch these kids learn to ride bikes. My children improved in their bicycle safety because of Central Elementary's P E program. And I thought it was important enough to come here tonight and just say that I think it's something that should not be cut. It's one of these programs that are essential to our kids, that helps them concentrate better at school when they have movement, when they have the access to the things he teaches them, and/or a school that's worried about retention and keeping students in. For someone like me who changed from homeschool to the public school system, that's something that should be kept in mind, and it's something that parents consider when making the education decisions for their children, of what town, if they're gonna homeschool, if they're gonna go private, or if they'll move to an entirely different town altogether. That's all.
Thank you, thank you.
My name is Christie Curtis, and I have a daughter who is in kindergarten. She loves gym, it is one of her favorite days of the week, she jumps at joy to tell me all of that when she gets home. I grew up in Hinsdale, I did not grow up in Bellas Falls, but I have been extremely pleased with the school system so far. I also grew up doing martial arts, and did that for twenty years, and I helped to teach the classes. So my fear with the classes being made larger is the lack of attention to the students that are in that class, the safety that is at risk, when you have more kids in each class, you have less space, they're gonna bump into each other more, you're not able to pay attention to each child's needs. I also think about the children who, like myself, had ADHD. You get very easily overstimulated and overwhelmed, you end up shutting down or having meltdowns, which then also impairs the safety of the other students, as well as the mental health and safety and physical safety of the children who are battling with that on a daily basis. Those activities are so important for those children to be able to have a break from focusing so hard on their schoolwork and sitting still and behaving behind that desk, it gives them that physical relief that they need so desperately. We don't get a such recess anymore for the kids that I got when I was growing up, we had two recesses every day and gym class. They don't get that now, so cutting down what they have time-wise and space-wise for their activities to me is just really harmful to them. And also about the equipment, you're not gonna have as much equipment as a kid needs. He's already saying that he goes to tag sales and places, which is fantastic that he does that on his own time to provide for them, and that shows how much he really truly cares about the kids and loves what he does, which as a parent means everything. So, just as a former physical educator in a sport, that's kind of my input, is just keep the classes as small as they can be, give those kids the attention that they deserve, give them the space and access to the proper equipment that they deserve, and allow him to keep doing as great of a job as he's been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? Name is David Ward, I have two children at Central Elementary School. I have wrote down a few things. Speaking for people is not my specialty, so. I just think that this is perhaps the wrong direction to cut any hours, physical activity is associated with mental wellness, and many of our students get the greatest opportunity in a small group with a personal approach provided by our elementary school physical education teacher. We can associate physical activity with learning retention, and many of our students get the greatest opportunity in a small group with a personal approach provided by our elementary school physical education teacher. We can associate physical activity with the beginnings of a championship football team and an impressive middle school girls' basketball team, and for a lot of students, their first introduction to sports is in a small group with a personal approach provided by our elementary school physical education teacher. I just think that this intimate approach that is provided to the students at Central is the proper course, and I'd hate to see anything other than maintaining the course that we've been going with, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Julia Etter, two students at Central Elementary School, thank you so much for hearing our comments this evening, we really appreciate it. I could say a lot of things, but what I want to say is that there have been studies that show how screen time negatively impact academic performance. There are studies that are showing that use of AI in academics impacts the way that we use critical thinking skills, in fact, quite negatively, and there are plenty of studies that show the negative impact of social media on the mental health and wellness of middle school, elementary school, and high school students. Physical education in all levels of school is foundational to helping our students manage these stresses that we did not grow up with. I don't think this is the place where we need to be taking away funding at this time. Sports are where kids, and physical education are where kids can hold a tool in their hand and feel really good about knowing how to use that tool, or they can hold a tool in their hand and be like, I don't really know how to use this tool, but I'm gonna keep trying. They learn perseverance, and they also learn teamwork. They learn how to support one another when somebody else isn't as good at something as they might be, and they learn how to look for help from peers. These skills are essential to a vibrant citizenship. And my biggest concern is once this position goes to part-time, we lose an exceptional teacher to another school district offering this position full-time, and then this position sits empty. And then this position sits empty. And once these cuts are made, it is really rare for them to go backwards. And I know that funding for public school over the next four years is not going to be easy. And I just don't think this is the cut we need to make at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody online?
Yeah, I have a chat. I had chat. We don't follow chat.
I wasn't checking. That's why I raised it.
No, no, no. Open meeting problems with chat. Okay.
Are, are we offering the opportunity for people to talk online now?
Yes, but, uh, there's someone ahead of you.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Uh, you can raise your hand though on your, uh, you know, on your screen. We'll call on you, so. Hi Laura.
Hi, my name is Laura Rounds and I am a parent of a central school student and a middle school student. And have had a child at central school since 2019. And have seen the amazing things that Mr. Lowry has done with, um, both of my girls and have heard about all of the wonderful opportunities that they've been able to participate in because of Mr. Lowry's dedication to the school and the students themselves. And I just wanted to share some of the experiences that we've had. Um, one of the things that the girls always really appreciate doing is the walk to school days that Mr. Lowry sets up each month for the kids to come and walk together. And there's usually a story for them to read along the way, or there's yoga moves for them to participate. It's a great way for them to start the day together on a positive note. And they go to school and they're excited about how their day has begun. And he does this regardless of the weather, which is always very much appreciated. Um, they have had the opportunity to learn how to ice skate and indoors and outdoors. And I know that Mr. Lowry, um, when they were doing it outdoors, had to help maintain the ice that they were using and just going above and beyond to make sure that all the students have the opportunity to have that experience. They have cross-country skied, they have snowshoed, they've gone sledding. They've participated in jump for heart, which is an after-school opportunity for them. And he has made that so much fun. They do jump for heart first, um, they practice jump roping in PE classes and then they're able to cheer each other on after school. And it's an amazing opportunity to see how the kids really are there for each other. And they make sure to, um, work together to have the goal, um, and to meet those goals. And then there's also the runners' club after school that Mr. Lowry has done to help set up for the 5K that he was talking about earlier. And Bike Week, which both of my girls have been able to participate in. My oldest is not a fan of biking and this was an opportunity for her to participate in something with her classmates. And it was really motivating for her and kind of helped her embrace biking a little bit more. And I, as a parent, could offer all of these opportunities to my children. I am fortunate in that way. But having the opportunity to do it with their classmates and with a teacher who has taken the time to set everything up with such care and, um, thoughtfulness for the students is something that I can't give them. And I am appreciative of Mr. Lowry every day for all of the hard work that he does at Central School for the students and all of the students. And I just want to say thank you to Mr. Lowry for everything you do. And thank you to the school board for listening, um, to all of the things that we have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't know iPhone two. Yeah, I don't know who iPhone two is, but we're calling on you now.
Is that me?
Yeah, it's you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so actually my point was made by another speaker a little bit earlier.
Hold on, can you identify yourself, sir, so that?
Oh, I'm terribly sorry. Uh, Mike Schlannoff, I have one child, a kindergartner at Central and, um, another child who will be there next year. Um, and I'm also a public school teacher in Charlestown, New Hampshire. And, um, I just, I see these trends in education. And I, I do find them concerning because I do think that, um, you know, we, we, we saw what happened with the budgets passing and not passing in Vermont in sort of an unprecedented way last year. And, um, things are challenging for the community in terms of taxes and all that. But when we, um, make these positions less desirable for educators, what we subject Bellas Falls to long-term is the bottom of the barrel in terms of job applicants. And there are not a lot of job applicants in education right now. And, um, I just would hate to see that for our community. I would hate to see that. Um, I know that there's a lot of pride in our community and our, um, ability to compete in athletics. And when kids are not exposed to this stuff at an early age in a way that is, um, pleasant for them, and certainly the way it's being delivered right now is, and these larger groups would be, I think, more intimidating for the kids. They're not going to chase the athletic passion in a way that Bellas Falls will see any sort of results. And, uh, I find that concerning and, um, just something I wanted to address. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, if anyone else on line, I don't see anyone. Hey, what else you room? Keith, Fredrick, Sir, I'm trying to see.
Just like the old days.
Yeah. Those of you who don't know me, I'm Keith Namlich. I'm the former principal at Central Elementary School. And for seven years I got to work with Peter Lowry and watch him do his magic, what he does on a regular basis in his space. Um, when he put together a phenomenal program, he's an exceptional teacher. But I don't want to talk about Peter. What I really want to talk about is the position. Because someone said it earlier, when you cut the position out of the budget, it's really hard to put it back in. And if you reduce this role to three days a week, that person has a three-day-a-week impact on the school. It's not the same, it's not even close to the same as being there five days a week where you, everybody can count on that person, the students can count on that person. And that's the key. It's all about the kids. The kids are losing out. So that's what I really want you to think about. Because this is a population that, you know, we have a lot of kids that spend a lot of time indoors. And they need to get out and move. And that's what he does. He gets kids out moving. And, you know, he talks about rollers, blades and skates and all this. It's unbelievable what he's put together and it's all on his own time. He'll show up on a Monday and I'll say, how was your weekend? He, he told me about the, you know, 50 pairs of this that he scrounged up for the school. It's a, it's a big program. It can't be maintained on a three-day basis. Um, I'm just, it's concerning that maybe you're being, you know, pound-wise and penny foolish. And, uh, I just want you to think about the kids at Central, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. First item is the phys ed position. Uh, and I, there was one item I wanted to address that we let you schedule. But at some point, there's been some kind of wild stuff flying around and, uh, just want to be very clear. We are currently meeting the Vermont Quality Standards in Physical Education. What the Vermont standards say is that kids have to have phys ed twice a week. It doesn't say how long. But our kids at Central have 45 minutes twice a week. So there's no other standards. Somebody at one point mentioned a curriculum organization that had their own standards. Those aren't Vermont standards. Vermont Quality Standards say twice a week. We're meeting. The other part is on the principals because there's a movement standard. So kids are 30 minutes a day of movement, meaning recess or what, or in the classroom, whatever. And that's on, and those are the, those are the phys ed standards for Vermont. That we are meeting. That's not a issue. And, uh, do you want to talk about the schedule just a little bit?
So I, and I think people who spoke today, um, did share, um, quite a bit. I mean, um, currently, um, under the schedule that, uh, happens at Central Elementary School, um, the, Peter sees kids twice a week, um, and in individual class. Um, and at Saxon's River, I don't want to forget that there's another school that's being impacted here, um, which is Saxon's River. Um, and they currently have a PE teacher two days a week. Um, and so in, in looking at what we currently offer as far as with art and with music, we currently offer three days a week at Central Elementary School. And we share that teacher with Saxon's River for two days a week. Um, and so that was the impetus of, of looking at, um, where there might be an opportunity to have a cost savings. Um, and looking at the schedules and in, in your board packet, uh, you'll see there's the current, um, CES PE schedule. Um, and this is what a typical week looks like at P for Peter. Um, and on the backside are, are some of the, um, activities he's listing, just, um, so those are some of the, the pieces, um, that are broken down in that. Um, the, there is another sheet in there that is Saxon's Rivers. Um, and that is, um, Bob's, it's not as detailed. Um, Ben, pardon me, did I say Bob? I apologize. So I apologize to Bob if he's listening or Ben. Um, so, um, but the breakdown of, of his schedule, uh, for two days a week. When we looked at an opportunity, the, the third one is is a sample of what a, a, a schedule could look like, which would, uh, maintain, uh, in three days where every class would get one period, um, individual, um,
At the same length of time.
Same length of time, so lengths of time don't change. Um, and so, um, each class would get an individual, uh, session. And then the third day would be a day where there would be combined classes under current enrollment, uh, projections. The, the biggest class would be 29 and the smallest class would be 25 combining those. And so that's combining all the first graders together, the second graders, third graders and fourth graders, um, for that, um, last day. That still does provide an opportunity with an open block for special projects, uh, which is currently built into, uh, Peter's current schedule. Um, and what it also does is maintain, uh, currently the projected incoming kindergarteners is a cohort of 17, um, for, uh, Central. And so, uh, that's only one class. And so that class would then, um, have their PE, uh, separately. So they would have two individual classes. And then that maintains the Saxon's River on a Thursday, Friday. Again, this is a sample. It could be Monday, you know, like, again, that's for the principals to work out. I had, um, but like a, a Monday at Central, a Tuesday at Saxon's River, a Wednesday at Central, you know, that kind of thing. So, and, um, again, I was just trying to look at how, uh, classes could be combined.
Um, board members, questions, comments?
Could I just add one more thing? And I just, I just also want the board to know winner sports is offered at every single one of our schools. Yes, you, uh, elementary schools. Um, skiing is provided, ice skating is provided, swimming is provided, depending it rotates a little bit. So all of those programming do continue to happen at all of our schools. And, and would can, the expectation would be to continue those programs, so.
How many weeks is that stretch for winner sports? It's like six.
Five typically for skiing.
Yeah. Bill, did you have any?
Yes. Uh, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the first time that there's been talk about combined classes in phys ed.
Uh, it may be at the board, but I'm certainly aware of that.
Okay. I see these figures of 25, 29, 27 and 28, there's timing sap being. Um, I would think for safety purposes and for inefficient form of instruction, we would limit PE classes to 20 students.
Well, we have quite a few parents that go to school, so I, I'm sure there are extra adults. I would presume, Bill, that the response is yes, but there would be other adults in the room.
Chris, could I just add? Um, under the adopted policies, um, that we have for class size, there is no limitation on PE. Um, that was adopted by all boards, um, I believe last year. Uh, might've been in two years. And, um, under our collective bargaining agreement, um, there isn't a, a limit on class sizes. Um, and under the quality standards, they even acknowledge that PE classes would be more than the typical class size.
We've had, uh, middle school, there's a class of 30, 25 to 35 at times, so I know that's a different age.
Right, it's a different age and.
And it's got its own issues.
Yes, it has its own issues here. I'll be quite honest, had I known about the combination, uh, and even entertaining the idea of having 25 to 29 students taking gym class in the same space at the same time, I would not have supported this cut. Uh, I'm going to let other people speak, but I would like to see an opportunity to perhaps walk this back because I see a safety issue here and I see an accident. But let's, let, I'll take the floor long enough, right for us.
Other comments?
Yeah, um, I'd just like to say first, I was joining the PTO meeting last week. And so I wanted to thank you all for bringing your concerns and questions here so that we can better understand and address them. Um, I have been trying to think about these decisions, which I think are tough ones and also a little bit complicated to understand. I, I know one of the other questions that came up in the board meet, or in the PTO meeting was, what does the board weigh in making these decisions? And my understanding is that we are responsible for making sure that our schools are meeting the educational goals that we have for our students through a wise and sustainable investment of our financial resources. And we're trying to do that with the best information we have available. And, you know, Vermont funding is very complicated and it has taken me a while to wrap my head around it. Thank you Ed and Andy for helping me with that. But I think in the absence of a lot of certainty around that, what we've tried to do as a board is to ask the people who know best to say, here's what we think a reasonable percentage would be. Tell us how and whether we can still meet the needs of students within those guidelines. And then, um, what we all, I think individually as board members try to do is to weigh what we hear from principals and parents and teachers is going to be the educational impact um, against what we understand the financial impact to be, at least as best as we can. And I think that seeing the tax sheet and hearing from folks, we might come to different conclusions on that as individual board members. And I think we certainly do. Um, I know there are other factors that we haven't talked about as much that I think would be helpful to understand, like that we are operating with a surplus from prior years that we are applying to school budgets through 2029. And we are trying to consider that that is offsetting the true cost of the school budget. And so being mindful of trying to gradually shrink costs in anticipation of the time where we're not going to have access to those funds anymore. So that when it comes to 2030 and we don't have access to that, we're not making a bunch of position cuts at once. And I know we're also concerned about declining enrollment. And I hear and appreciate your sharing, um, because I also share concerns that if we make position cuts, we risk worsening that problem because families who can may choose to take their kids elsewhere. I know we're also going to be talking about enrollment later. And I'm hopeful with a better understanding around some of the data and trend that'll help us make more. And I'm hopeful with a better understanding around some of the data and trend that'll help us make more informed decisions. But I just, I think this is, again, I'll say a complex thing to understand and we really benefit from participation. And so I think that I wanted to say, I really appreciate your feedback. I also hope that we have an opportunity to weigh in on that. But I wanted to explain a little bit more about some of the thinking that I know has gone on as we talk about the budget.
You know, it's a, it's a, it's one aspect of a very complicated budget. And the, the trade-offs that we're asking the administration to make in order to try to manage the cost is difficult, I guess. But I mean, the, you know, clearly, you know, the academic, we, we as board members, we share very serious concern about our academic performance at our schools. And we're, we're trying very hard to keep the resources fully employed into improving and getting those test scores back up to a respectable level. And I think that the the decision or the recommendations that Andy made were, weren't easy, but I think they were well, well-founded, well-thought-out. And I think that, you know, as we go forward, I just, you know, one of the things that I, I noticed, I, I, this is my second and last trip on the, on the board. I, I volunteered to come back on the, on the Rockingham Board in 2019, the fall of 2019. There were, believe it or not, there were two open positions on this five-person board at that time. So I volunteered to get back on. We were working on completing the budget for 2021. And the, the average cost of the student, if you, if you did the math the way we, we were taught, which is the number of kids we actually have and the budget total, it was a little over eighteen thousand of pupil. That was nineteen, that was two thousand. In this budget, if you make that division, it's twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. That is an enormous, a forty percent increase in the cost per pupil. And in a time when, when, which is that, that level is probably three and a half times the inflationary factor for that period. So these are the kind of concerns and, and you know, with the shrinking, shrinking student body, the rising cost, the need to address student performance. These are the kinds of challenges that we all face. And I think that this, this decision is made in that context. And I think it was, I think it was a good decision. And I thank you for the opportunity to, and I, I do appreciate it. And we think very highly of this young man over here. So it's, you know, don't, don't interpret anything personal on these. It's kind of very difficult decisions that we have to make.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo both for Jim and Caitlin both said. It's, it's a very complicated and difficult decisions that we have to make. They're, they're, you know, I don't know how much everyone was paying attention to the process leading up to this. But we sent the principals and administration back three times, four times. Said sharpen your pencils again and again. You know, brought us several proposals. You know, I appreciate what everyone had to say as a, you know, a parent of a, a kid who went through Saxons River, Bellas Falls Middle School, graduated from the high school a couple of years ago. I totally get, he never would have skied if it wasn't for the Bellas Falls and the, and the Saxons River outdoor sports program. So I totally understand the impact of there, that those, that they have. And, and this is, this is not an easy task. It's Caitlin mentioned like, you know, if you've actually figured out all the funding stuff, please give me this. I've been doing this for years and, and still like, it, it's, it's really difficult. I encourage, you know, we'd love to see you all come back more often under better circumstances and help us, you know, like figure some of these things out and, and have more input and, and know more about what we're, we're doing on a regular basis. I got, I got involved in the school board years ago because I wanted to know what was going on and like all the stories that I heard about the school system here and, and what was going on, making sure I knew as much as I could about my kid entering the, you know, the, the middle school at the time. It's been quite a journey. Very difficult at times, and this is one of those difficult times. So thank you all for, for, you know, coming out and letting us know how you feel about all this.
And I, I would just reiterate, as Peter said, we are all on the same team. And I appreciate the, the thoughtfulness of comments we put. People understand that there are a lot of forces we're trying to navigate here in terms of budgeting normally starts in October, November, December. It's normally we have a budget voted by the first week of January. So for those of you that are interested in budgeting in particular, maybe not so much in the other stuff, the time to tune in is October. For those of you that are interested, everything, run for the school board for goodness sakes. Some of us older people are feeling retired actually. We should have parents. Some sooner than others. But in any case, democracy doesn't work unless people participate. Sometimes participating means you get up there and you run for an office. And that's, think about it. You're sitting up going, what a jerk that Kibby is. Think about it, yeah. You, you could be here. It's a multi-faceted.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
I still think these numbers for the combined classes are too high. It's a safety issue. And since I supported the original vote or I was, I supported the original motion when we did vote to go along with the administration's plan to have one PDP for both Central and Saxons River. I think I have, I believe I have the right to request that this matter was voted on again, now that we have this information of combined, combined class sizes.
You have the right to move to rescind.
Okay.
Which is different because then
Then, then it positions us for
Then there would have to be another vote on the budget.
Okay. Well, then I'm going to vote that we rescind the vote that was taken on this two weeks ago. Was that the proper word?
Well, you're, it's the budget vote.
The budget vote, yes, the larger, this being part of a larger budget.
Keep in mind that we just voted on a budget. It's up to the administration to
I know, but I believe we need to send a strong message, in particular with these, this idea of a common, combined gym class.
Okay. So we have a, we have a motion to rescind the budget vote from January eleventh. Any discussion?
I'll just add, I think again, like we, I really appreciate the work that Andy put into verifying some of these points. It sounds like we are going to meet even with the shared position, the requirements of the minutes. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we are meeting what the educational outcomes that people are looking for are. So I am considering that and also considering what looks to be on this tax sheet, a very low tax increase. And trying to weigh what I've heard from parents who are also taxpayers against what I understand the financial impact might be to votes and see where the balance lies in that. And so I, I just wanted to add that into the discussion before we continue.
Okay. Any other comment? So motion has been made to rescind the budget vote of January eleventh. So a vote yes is a vote to rescind. A vote no is a vote not to reconsider. So, yes.
So if we rescind, what are the next steps after that?
We'll have to warn another meeting. I, I don't know what when staff report, dude?
I think yesterday. No, we're, we're very tight, but we would have to warn another meeting.
We would have to warn another meeting.
So following up on your comment about we set the overall budget. Does changing the, does just rescinding the vote on the budget and changing the budget mean that we're reinstated, that the, the, the administration would have to reinstate that person? Or if they, if we, if
There's some Sarah.
Right. So I guess my, my, my ulterior question is instead of, instead of rescinding the current budget, could we push harder to find a way to keep the teacher with the, with the budget that we put in? Like I know that we like bare-boned it, pared it down and everything as much as we could, but is, is, is there an alternative?
My view on that is that is a step into the administration's shoes, which I strongly encourage people not
Right. So I guess, and I guess that's my point. It's like the budget is the budget, whatever it is. If, if they decide to use it, it, you know, it's up to Andy and his teams to figure out out a portion out of that money. So rescinding the budget vote, putting more money into the budget may leave more money for that, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that's where the money will end up being used in the long run.
That is correct.
And it further, the timing is, is not right. I mean, there's, there's flexibility going forward. This, we're voting on an amount and to do this at this time is really very disruptive. So it's anyway, I, I, I really and truly hope that we will just continue to, with this budget and and then give the administration and the board and after March an opportunity to, to do some wiggling or whatever, whatever you want to do. But at least you cut the frame.
Sure, you won't be on the board.
I won't be on the board.
After the budget's passed, that's just within the same amount of money, right? Is what you're saying?
You have, you have the amount of money. That's exactly right. Yeah.
So, so theoretically speaking, if someone were, if, if a couple of veteran teachers were to retire or to, to leave, right? Then there's some extra dollars we can play with that. Move, plays probably the inappropriate word, but move it around. Or if going back with administration and hearing, you know, where the community views are and what we may have to take a look at, do we find another way to find those same dollars? But that may mean a sacrifice in another area. But we, that would be a, we would go back and look with, work within the budget we have. I mean, it's when a budget fails and you have to go back and redo it, then you have to do the same kind of thing.
I have another question.
We're not, we're not taking questions. Bill?
I just wanted to reiterate that I found out about these combined classes this afternoon. And for me, this is a red flag.
Well, I think we should have this vote. Here, if that's okay. And so a vote yes is a vote to rescind. So all voting yes, raise their hand.
Can I just clarify one more question? So a vote yes is a vote to rescind? And then you would need to go back and say we would want a higher budget or?
Or a lower budget. Be, you know, I'm not trying to be facetious.
No, no.
It's a rescinding of the agreement of the budget that we were going to do articles on.
Yeah.
We would have to then come back and look at what a new budget would be.
Let's just do this. Bill?
Yes. No?
Yes.
No.
Good about no. Let us move on to the tax sheet.
All right. So there is a tax sheet in your packet, but Ed Connors has prepared a tax sheet, so I'm going to try and project that at the same time. So give me one second, please, to do that. Ed, which slide? Should I use this slide?
It says my calendar.
Yeah, okay. Make it bigger if I can see it.
I'm sorry.
I, I was going to ask, I was going to, I didn't know if everyone knew, so Ed Connors.
Your name is Ed Connors. I'm Bill.
So what Ed prepared here on, on column C, you have the, the Rockingham proposed or estimated, let me call it an estimated tax. And then in column E, you have the high school estimated tax. Line thirteen, you have the prorated tax amount. Line fourteen is the combined, so that's the high school and Rockingham. The CLA is on line fifteen. With all of those pieces, that would be an estimated increase of about point zero two five one or a one point five nine percent increase. Oh, there's more, more detail I didn't throw in there, so. Yeah, I just want to be clear, this is an estimate. We don't know everything.
The biggest, the biggest, the biggest issue will be the yield, which I think it's, I didn't even know if the yield's on the sheet.
It is, it's line ten.
Line ten.
It's estimated at eight thousand five five three.
That's, that's a number that could change.
We are hearing indicators that it may actually improve, which would actually be a benefit.
Right.
So
I think one of the points that actually you made, if you look at the increase and you say, well, how could, how could you have seven and a half percent increase in the high school four point three percent increase here? It's because we've got five hundred thousand of surplus from prior years and two hundred and forty thousand surplus from the high school. And that's, if you, if you took that seven hundred thousand and put that into the numbers, I don't know what the actual percentage would be. But that's, that is what we're talking about is that we're, we're facing a cliff. And, and I think the but that, that those past circles are really painting on, in terms of the, the tax impact.
Yeah, I, I think I understand that. I think the other thing I would just add that has been helpful for me in thinking about this is, you know, I, I did like play around with this and if you take the surplus out, what is the cost per pupil? Like, does that get us closer? We're not, we're still not very close to the, that threshold. But I think our goal in doing that was to be able to provide additional services to students at a time that, you know, was of greater need to them without spiking the tax rates. And so that's why when I look at a tax rate increase that is this low, I feel like we still have room without having done that. But I think, you know, I see your pitch. I think it's like a very, I like, it's something that's coming and we need to be
And you hear the, the governor's address and they, they pick up, they, yeah. Taxpayers. So it's going to be going to be interesting what happens this year. Going to be interesting what happens this year in the legislative session, you know.
And, and I think it. It's obvious, we all know it, but it might not be obvious to people out there in TV land. This is our tax system for this year.
Yeah.
You know, there. There's going to be a new proposal out to go to apparently a foundation formula, which would be entirely different, but that would be. Other year.
Yeah.
So. It'll be the same, Ed, did you have anything to add to the?
No, I, I think, um, what I just, what was shown here, this gives you a true picture with what information we have right now.
Okay.
Our projected tax rate would look like and make exact comparison to what we paid last year.
I think anything, because this is so clear to me, to be able to see this, it's, it's really helpful to people that understand.
This is actually Arnie's. Well, it's not that, the, the presentation.
Yeah, we built off, we went back and, and, and looked at it, but, um, uh, Hardy Merrill of Grafton, Athens Grafton School District. Had actually gone ahead and done a lot of these ahead of time, and then we verified all the numbers and kind of went back and forth, but. Um, he kind of helped prepare some of these as we transitioned from Jim to Ed, so that's helpful.
I kidded Hardy at one point that he'd had too much time on his hands, if he was generating numbers that the state was going to give us anyway. For this, so. My name is.
Our percentage, uh, our, the Rockingham percentage of the total, of course, has gone up. Uh, and, uh, because of the, the bigger drop in the high school. Um, numbers versus the Rockingham numbers.
But pupil per pupil, so? The drop that you got on?
Yeah.
Yep, want to clarify.
Because I think we were.
Both the SU and.
Yeah.
What?
Both the SU and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, okay, on to the articles.
Okay, so we'll run through those, um. Black, white, and black. Um, so these are the articles we've prepared for you, uh, for your approval, um. That, um. The town meeting is, it's Saturday, March first, just wanted to remind everyone, uh, Rockingham voted to have it. Have it on a Saturday, so it is on Saturday at two o'clock on March first. Um, and.
Thought it was here.
It will be here, um, but it's the Rockingham Town Meeting.
Right, but it says.
Oh, it does say that, oh, thank you for catching that, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna highlight that, I'll, I'll correct that later.
I also have a question, the, the town clerk told me the meeting was at four, um.
Okay, um, I will verify that with, um, I'll verify that with Nicole, because she had.
It didn't seem right to me, but.
Well, you know, the. If they take turns.
Who's first?
Who goes first and second, so the, if the town goes first. And it starts at two o'clock and will be.
Right, if, if that is the case, it should say two.
So we will.
Say two, yeah, yeah.
If, if you, you are okay with giving a permission to make those slight adjustments once we verify those pieces, um, and, uh.
Well. This also is, uh. Sorry.
No, it's okay, I mean.
Uh. Yeah, we're not meeting on Monday, March, that kind of seven o'clock, so that, uh, is all wrong. It should say the legal voters, the Rockingham Town School District, are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Bellas Falls Middle School in said town on Saturday.
Yep.
Uh.
March first.
March first.
At two P M, yes.
At two P M.
So I will make those adjustments. Um. And then to adjourn, uh, on March fourth, uh, at the Masai Temple, um. By Australian ballot, um, on article, and we just have to fill that in, what article that will be, um, based on, that would be article, I believe, two. Anyway, so I make that adjustment right now. Um. So article two. Um, article one is just to hear the reports, uh, article two is, uh, the total budget. Uh, of eleven million, two forty-nine, oh, sixty-three. Um, and then we, uh, were required this year to return the language of the second sentence, which is. The Rockingham School District estimates at the proposed budget, if approved, will result. In per pupil education spending of twelve thousand, eight hundred, one dollar, which is a six point zero four percent higher than per pupil spending. Uh, of the current year.
Andy. The twelve thousand eight oh one was when we were, this afternoon, we were talking about.
Yeah.
How much we were going to use to offset. And we took twenty-five thousand, yeah, that ran out, so the number now is twelve, eight, thirty-three, forty-four, twelve. Eight, thirty-three. Twenty-four, four, which is a six point three percent increase.
Would that number, Ed, does that number, the twelve, that you just said, belong on the sheet?
Uh.
Because it doesn't appear on the sheet, is a, is twelve, eight, seven, one, ninety-one. Uh, but that's not the number you just gave.
The expenditures aren't the same either.
Right, it's, uh, eleven million, two forty-nine, oh, sixty-three, on that sheet.
None, this sheet is, it's seventy-eight.
Can you bring that sheet up?
On my account.
Yeah. By which one, oh.
Because the number we voted was, was eleven, two forty-nine.
Yeah.
And this number.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Should be changed to eleven million. Oh, sixty-three.
Two forty-nine, oh, sixty-three.
Eleven, two forty-nine, oh, sixty-three.
Two forty-nine, oh, eighty-nine.
Oh, sixty.
Oh, eighty-nine.
That was the number we. We voted.
One percent. Eleven million.
Eleven million, two hundred, forty-nine thousand, eighty-nine dollars, okay, so.
That is what changes.
That will have a. That will have an. Calculations.
Eleven million, two forty-nine, oh, eighty-nine. Nine, eight, eight, nine, oh, eighty-nine. Twelve, eight, thirty-three, four, seven, seven.
Twelve, what is it, uh, twelve, eight, thirty-three?
No.
Twelve, eight, thirty-three.
Thirty-three, oh, four-four. And I will send out, uh, an updated sheet. I apologize to you.
And what was that, was that six oh four, or was that?
Six point three.
Six point three.
Are we good on article two? Just, I appreciate that, sorry that that's not updated. Um, article three, um. Is to create a tax relief fund in the sum of four hundred thousand dollars from the fiscal year twenty-four fund balance to reduce expenditures in future years. In order to reduce taxes. Article four. Uh, was to authorize the school board, uh, to apply the sum of forty-five thousand, nine thirty-five. From fiscal year twenty-four fund balance to a capital reserve fund. Play for it there. Article five. Shall the voters approve the annual compensation in the amount of eight hundred for the board chair, seven hundred. For members, five hundred for the treasurer. And article six would be to complete any other transactions.
Oh, approval of the amended warrant. A, uh, discussion? Hello, who's that?
Are we going to decide? Who said, who presents what, or are you just going to do it all?
No, no, we'll do that at another meeting.
Okay.
I'm just going to give the meeting a warning. Uh, okay. All those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Um, so. In terms of signing it, Andy, if people need to stop by the.
Uh, what we did, we can, uh, have this ready for you to come in and sign, or we can panda dock it to everybody, whatever is easier.
Panda dock.
Okay.
So I will have Nicole panda dock it out, and the reason I'm just bringing it up in, in public is so that you are aware of it, so it's going to come, so please sign it and, um, we'll welcome that as well.
If the board's okay with it, can we take a brief recess for bathroom and me to blow my nose and stuff going on?
Yep. Do it, Andy.
Sure.
You're back on.
Thank you.
She opened this today. He's perfect. Thank you.
I gather, and that's another thing on the gap. There. We're back. Uh, next item is enrollment trends is something I think Caitlin used already asked for this, but we all thought it was a good idea. Would you like to lead this off?
Oh, sure. I, um, maybe I can just say what I think might be helpful and then we could talk about it more in depth at another meeting. Um, so I know this one has been long already, and we might not have all the data on hand, but I think I was just curious if there is a way for us to get a better understanding of what the projected enrollment drops are and to understand what the cause of it is. Like, is it, we have two or families in the area? I know I saw at one point like an enrollment sheet or map where we were looking at the number of students who are enrolled in private schools who are residents of our town. So I think trying to better understand that so that I know like overall enrollment in Vermont has dropped and that is partly, as I said, a function of the demographics of the state, but where it is possible to understand where students are leaving our schools and why they are leaving our schools, I think it would help us to try and, um, you know, address it in some way, either like communications or our, like, understanding what those needs are.
So, a couple of things. I just got back from the state. We had asked them, we'd given them some numbers and, um, the guy doing it um, was delaying getting them to me. I just got them back. I haven't really been able to unpack them. How projected out it looks like through twenty twenty-nine? Um, they're not one hundred percent like, um, like if you hired a company, they come in and do a lot of the questioning that you're, that you're asking. Um, and we're trying to find a way to do that. Um, so they're, they're more based around school construction projections. So, uh, that's the kind of the department it came out of because they have the tool to kind of figure out what you might need. Um, so like I said, we haven't fully unpacked those, um, and been able to spend the time on it. Um, but I do know that Westminster is having similar conversations.
Yeah.
Um, and has approached uh, the select boards, uh, the select board of, of, to talk about housing trends because that's, they had a decrease of almost twenty students, uh, over the summer. Um, and some of the feedback we received within, uh, West, from folks that moved out of Westminster or left was housing. And actually, someone actually moved into Rockingham. So, you know, because I got.
There were, I think there were quite a few.
Yeah, because I actually got requests to continue to, um, go to school in Westminster, but they reside now in, in Rockingham. And so, um, so that was some of it. Um, some of the anecdotal and I, you know, that we hear when we're trying to hire people. And I think, um, uh, Heather Willis Doxy, our, our director, especially I'd shared a little bit of it. You know, childcare continues, accessibility to high-quality childcare continues to be a major driver that we're hearing from candidates when they come in. That is, that is a major driver. Housing continues to be another piece of it. And then the, the third piece that, um, we hear is, uh, employment for spouses. So, and, and then what we're hearing specifically around positions within special education have to do with funding or, or, or salaries because to, for like a, an occupational therapist, they can go work in the health industry and make a lot more money. So we have that challenge and I know, you know, but, but those three parts of that stool have been anecdotally, you know, and, and that, I don't have data to kind of say that, other than the the childcare, I have some of that data because we had some studies done previously, so. Um, but it is something we are unpacking and, and looking more. Um, I, you know, um, I haven't had a chance to have a conversation with Rockingham, you know, as far as planning and stuff like that. Um, they may have more information too.
Have, uh, have principals, I think about the kids that were already in our area is uh, how many kids are homeschooled currently that could be in K through eight, do you?
I can get those numbers off the top of my head. I don't know. That's, I mean.
One is technique that is, is being in constant contact with those people. Like trying to recruit them back. Because they're here. They're, they're they're real people that could be in our schools. They may not want to. But if you never make contact with them, you know, they're, they're never going to.
Yeah, and and I think that was one of the conversations we even had in Westminster, you know, there, what was thrown out was there's, there's tons of families and I, and I said, do we have that data? And I was like, no, that's just the perception is that there's tons of families. I don't know off the top of my head, so.
Well, I know Westminster, they always had a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember at one time there were thirty homeschool kids.
I know it's not that. I know it's not that at all. Um, but we can definitely pull our data and get it for the next meeting.
One of the, uh, there, uh, I, I don't wanna start rumors or anything like that, but I think we, um, uh, you know, when you look at school-aged children, you've, you've mentioned the, the, uh, the kids that are in homeschool. Um, the other alternative was private, private schools and, and, you know, some people do utilize uh, Vermont Academy, for example. That's the closest competitor. Uh, the Compass School, uh, uh, has, uh, as, as well as Vermont Academy, both of these private schools have I think substantial financial challenges. Um, and I don't know what that owns for the, for the future, you know, whether that's more students or Rockingham or fewer students for Rockingham. I, I don't know, but I think the uh, the trends in smaller towns around here where, uh, there's voting to close schools and things like that, the, um, you know, I mentioned the, the, the math for, for Rockingham was like, our K through eight is like forty-five thousand five hundred per kid, actual kid that we have, you know, budget, okay? And last year, I think it was thirty-seven thousand in, in, um, uh, half grand, just because there's only thirty-four kids there or something. So, so, you know, there's, 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 there's several trends out there. And how you interpret the trends and how you anticipate the trends and stuff like that are all, um, are all appropriate. But, uh, I think from, uh, you know, from a school board standpoint, my, I, I've always been, uh, uh, in, in coming onto the Rockingham School Board, in fact, when I did, uh, I, I firmly believe in the value proposition that if you, if you have excellent results and you do it at a reasonable cost, then they will come. You know, I mean, to me, it's, it, it, there's, there is still value to the value proposition. And I think that the, as I said earlier, I think that this board has, is, uh, and this superintendent is, is, I think really trying very hard in our school principals and center to, to improve our student performance because if, when you look at that, it's not pretty. It's not pretty. And, uh, uh, and I think that, uh, uh, that as a board, board member, as now going board member, that's, you know, that's kind of the focus I've always had and quote, uh, some people share it.
I didn't think I would say.
Well, I was gonna say it's hard to buck fertility and that's part of what's going on. It's kind of almost pointless to talk about it. It's self-reversive, but if you think about the fact, let's say there are uh, two thousand people living in Rockingham right now who are of age that might have children. And if they are, have gone from having two kids in their family down to one and a half or one, that is a massive amount of children we're not getting, you know, so nothing we can do about that, but we can do other things like making schools attractive or recruit kids from other places. So, but it's, it's a tough one, you know, and I've been here, I guess, for involved in the school system for over twenty-five years and the student enrollment has gone down every single year. Every single year, usually about three percent, not even, but, uh, for no reason that I could ever think of. If I, I just kind of realized, oh, people are just having fewer children. You know, it's expensive to have children. It's expensive to send them to college. It's, it's unpredictable world right now.
Yeah, and I just thought, help that. And I think what we've also kind of heard is the, how, with housing, you know, young families, there's a lot, there, there are houses, but some of them are older and you need to invest a lot of money into them and new families don't have a lot of money to invest in an older house and are looking for maybe a smaller house, you know, type of thing that you know, it's move-in ready, I, I guess I'll call it. And, but they, you know, and, and some of that's just ordinance things that have nothing, we can help influence, but I think are more town-oriented pieces, so.
People go name giant houses, something more four or five children, everything, you know.
I, I mean, in, in my town, and I know it's in New Hampshire, that there, there's active building going on of whether it's detached townhomes uh, where they're putting like eight on a, you know, they're pretty tight. I'm not gonna, you know, but you know, and then there's unusable buildable space that's part of the shared space, right? And so they're, you're doing that, or there's a whole development that went in that is detached or is attached housing. So they're kind of look like row houses a little bit, like the old school. So some of them were duplexes and then some were, I think it was like six to eight. But we, we just went to kind of explore. We didn't know what it was. And the number of young families with like one, maybe two kids out riding bikes kind of thing, like and they all have central air, you know, eight, you know, central heat and, you know, so like you can see how that's attractive to people. I don't know where they're working. I didn't say that, but, um, you know, then that frees up you know, but they're still expensive too. I don't want to lie. I don't want to lie. That, that's expensive. You know, I was shocked at the cost versus, you know, but buy one of those that was good size and take it to my house and they were fairly sim- similar. My house was nineteen hundred, right? I, since buying my house, I've put almost a hundred thousand dollars into it, you know, so that's.
Yes.
There's a, I think there's a lot of factors that are totally out of our control and then where there are factors that might be within our control, it's helpful to understand what we could do. Like, I was in the, uh, the SIP meeting earlier and we were talking about communicating the goals that we have for the district with more families so they understand, like, here's what we're all working toward. I mean, I being on the board is a great opportunity to better understand the schools. And I've been talking about the new curriculum to like every parent, but I mean, because I think it's such a great move for our district and I see such great things happening. But I think like, you know, the more systematized we can be about that communication and the more targeted we can be in addressing any things that are causing people like the, the teacher who spoke tonight to think about, oh, I don't know, is this really for me? And then to reconsider that, I think it's helpful for us to, to try and do.
I think there are little things too, like, yeah, right now or one day with the transition because of the moving to this new platform and people are really struggling with that. I mean, I'm hearing that more from people than anything else. You know, I can't find out anything about the board meetings. I can't, you know, and so it's a little thing, but it, it makes a big difference because people want to like, if they want to know about the school system, they're clicking on it, you know, and.
And, and so I will just put a plug in for the work that Ricky Adams does and his team. We have a team of three folks for our ID department. This, other districts our size have doubled the, the personnel and they have a much higher budget. And we get sometimes more done, but those are the things, like, we would love to have someone who is able to put together some kind of video film of like the curriculum we're doing and be able to do like a, you know, a, a nice publicity kind of thing. We're just all, you know, stretched and that's, you know, but that would be adding positions, which is increasing the, you know, so it's like this, it's a catch twenty-two. Um, and, you know, uh, I keep going back to the high school to see if there's like a student or two, that's their shtick, you know, because I that's, I'd love to have kids doing those things and promoting what we do. So the former fact TV board member, they're a great resource for that thing right there.
Well, it's a matter of prioritizing too, you know, like getting the school webpage, the the webpages on, has got to come first, you know.
Yeah.
Kind of a publicity.
And, and we've got a target date and we're, we are working on that, so.
Okay.
Um, so one, one of the things Caitlin, when she was chatting, talking, what she said was, you know, she asked about why people are leaving, how many are leaving. And I, my thought was to kind of your comments about is it it, it's not so much people leaving, it's people coming in and kids being torn and brought into the community that are going in. So I'd be interested when we're looking at it, so like kind of look at that, like, how many are actually leaving versus how many are coming in? And like, when they're leaving, where are they going? I know Andy said, you know, if I had requests, it seems like we've always had requests of, you know, we moved from Bellas Falls Northwest Minister, can we stay in the Rockingham School District? Or we've moved from Westminster to um, Bellas Falls, we want to stay here. So that's, that was one of the, um, consolidation things that would have been a big help to, to us.
Would have been a big.
Um, you know, it's, it's how to move students and, and staff to some extent, but, um, but yeah, I think it's, you know, the number of people I know who decided not to have kids or only having one or two kids, um, you know, is huge. Like I don't, I know very few families, like when I was growing up, you know, like, oh, well, there's, you know, six kids there and eight kids there, you know, like they've got their own baseball team. Um, and I didn't really see that too much. Got them in the news because it's a phenomenon now.
Okay, so you're gonna bring us back some more data, whether so we get that. Uh, we need a motion to go into executive session to uh, discuss court staff negotiations, uh, premature knowledge of which could place the board or the staff members at a disadvantage.
Oh.
All those favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And invite the superintendent. Superintendent, yes.
And. You okay if I excuse the principal?
Please, yes, please let the principals go.
Okay. Look, you're up.
Okay, it's seven fifty-two, we're back in open session, there'll be no action. Uh, director's comments, next up, Phil, do you have any comment?
Uh, please, everybody stay warm and hope you feel better for us.
Oh, sure, in time, but as soon as possible.
Rip?
I'm all set.
Caitlin?
Yeah, um, I will try to keep it short because I do feel bad for your notes, Chris, but I have been thinking so much about budgeting and trying to understand it and balance these financial and educational impacts and I know that we really benefit when we get as much input as possible on both of those, so I just want to thank uh, Mandy again for helping walk me through the formula so I'm not just pasting it together from like archive PDFs on the AOE website. Um, and also, like, as you mentioned, we really benefit from hearing from parents and teachers and participating in this meeting and um, so I think that it is as helpful as we can be making this process clear and accessible to more people, then the more participation and understanding we'll have about what the educational impact people are receiving is and have a greater opportunity to to reach informed decisions, so. Um, and hopefully that as we continue to talk about community engagement and think about our board rules and our budgeting process, we can find ways to get more folks involved a little earlier in the process, so we don't end up at a fight literally thinking about like, what do we change at the last minute? Um, but we feel like we've been able to hear from people and make decisions.
Thank you. Phil, uh, James, are you?
I'm all right.
Okay. There's one can do. Sort of future agenda items, uh, where I guess, perhaps for town meeting, probably just. I guess, let me know if you have something.
Next meeting.
Good question.
The third is the first way to handle it, that's the.
That would, that is your next scheduled meeting, February third.
Okay. And that's the legal scheduled meeting.
Regular, that's your normal scheduled meeting, yes, thank you.
All right. Player so secure.